Okay, so now we're ready to-
4:21, go ahead.
-open the hearing for 4:21, Paul and Rose. Maybe what we should do with this one is start with comments that- I think Phil, you and Lucy had some comments to make.
Here it is.
Okay. Well, I don't know if it's limited to the ones that they put in their emails, so-
No, well-
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay, and while you were on the previous subject, Mark and Lucy and I stepped outside and he's clarified some of the comments, others he agrees with the rewording. And I'll identify those as we go and you can fight up if that got it wrong. And one was still a bone of contention.
Okay.
The- Under the approval of the various plans. It's under the rule of the approved Plan K.
What page?
Didn't write the page.
I think page nine.
Yeah, approved plans.
Yes, proposed landscaping and lighting plan.
Yeah. L2 is, if I read it correctly, reading these things is not my strong point. L2 is a landscaping and lighting plan. L3 is only a landscaping plan. But between L2 and L3, Mark and his landscaper and us met and agreed upon the plantings that are in L3. So it should be made clear that to the extent that L2 and L3 conflict, L3 controls. L3 says nothing. You don't want to wipe out L2 because L3 doesn't say anything about the wiping.
In the L, it's noted as Sheet L3.
Now, on page 10.
I think we're on page 10.
On the top of page 10. There's- There's three lighting and landscape plans. One is lighting and landscape Sheet L dash 2. One is proposed exterior lighting product spec sheets, L2 dash of dot 1. And then L noted at the top of page 10 is Sheet- is the proposed planting plan, which is Sheet L3.
Not on my copy. I have a different copy. We get the right copy?
That was the revised, there's a revised one that says 102914 revisions noted in blue.
Okay. Okay.
So you're saying L3 is- is different from the other two?
I think you're saying there are plantings shown on both plantings saying, I would have to look to confirm. And some of the plantings shown on L3 are not shown on L2.
So L3 prevails?
Yes, I just want that to be clear.
That's fine if the words are in there.
So if we put some kind of language saying, you know, if there's different, if there's differing information that L3 will produce?
Yes.
It's actually probably not a bad boilerplate paragraph anyway, under general conditions. But in the event of conflicts, generally, the more stringent document would apply.
Well, I think in this case it's-
In this case, it's got to be the specific-
It's the later documents.
I understand.
They both, they both carry the date, October 15th. The fact is, L3 is created in there.
Right. You okay on that one? Yeah.
Now landscaping and lighting conditions. Mark agreed that the post lights would be on motion detectors. That's mentioned in the minutes of, in the section that we sort of mentioned for lighting.
Good as well.
Is that on K, proposed exterior lighting product spec sheet? Okay. I think it should be put in at page 14. And that in number E, we cited the lighting fixtures. So whichever one the light post is, I think it's the Volmex. The 15 quantity of 15. So whichever one the light post is, we'll put a provision in that says it'll be on sensors.
So you're talking about section 21E?
Yeah, page 14, right.
Well, our page, we must have the earlier version or I must-
Yeah, yeah, I think you did.
Because my page is different.
Well, there's one, there's one that I sent out that says 102914 revisions noted in blue.
I don't actually know.
Well, no, I think they actually have that.
I have that.
Yeah, that's what we have.
I've got one dated 10, well, one I had was dated October 28th with-
Yeah, so check that one.
With red. Yeah, that's apparently the one for sure.
So it would be-
Well, I have no idea which it is. I think you could just put a phrase that's saying-
So it would be D1E that talks about the exterior lighting fixtures and they're listed. And basically, the light post fixture, I will put a note saying that it'll be-
All post lights will be on motion detectors.
Post lights will be on sensors.
Right, and the exterior lights will be placed in the bottom reference above. All post lights will be activated by motion detectors.
Are there two post lights?
We could say driveway lights.
Roadway lights.
I was just trying to look at me, they at least tell you the quantity that's in E.
E on page six says motion sensors, but as Mark said, that's minutes.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, it's not the other.
Yeah, right, yeah. So he's represented that he's going to do that. So it just needs to be included in conditions.
Okay, what's next?
The last one is, well, one of the bone of contention.
Which is the working hours.
Yeah.
What, of a drainage?
Oh. Yeah, okay, what did you want to say about that?
Well, we had agreed, there are like 70 drainage structures on the plan, the Metro West plan, and we talked about putting in 25 to 30 very early in the process, so in case we had to pump water, it wouldn't go with any of the neighbors property we had a place to put it. And that's fine to do. I agree to do that.
All right. So then-
So do you want to provide a phasing plan for doing that, or what ones you're going to put in, or?
We could do some kind of plan if you want, or we could come up with language to include in this, whatever is clearer, makes sense. It's a good idea.
I would suggest that maybe some kind of language saying, prior to any work being done on the site, you provide-
Well, we have to, I think we have to do the drilling and blasting first. We can't do it immediately because, you know, we need to get some of this heavier work done before we put in the structure. So it would be early on in the process, but it won't be prior to everything. What you could say is, if we had to put a timetable on it, it would be, you could say right, right after foundation work, prior to framing or something like that. And we'd probably get it in sooner, but you know.
Could I make a suggestion on that?
Sure.
Could you, could we follow up and have Dave talk to your civil engineer and just specify time when they think that would be likely installation time?
Do you need a full site? Because what we could do on the plan is, it shows the 70 or so structures. We could outline in red, for example, those that we will put in at this, you know, phase one. These don't need to be on a full-size plan, it's going to be on just an eight and a half by 11 piece of paper. How would that work?
That would be an attachment on an eight and a half by 11 piece of paper, could be my guess, because all you're looking for is the location. So they could just, it could be diagrammatic even.
Right, and we put a note on there saying when, when parts of them, they were being installed.
So that's a follow-up with Dave.
So that would be in the stormwater conditions?
Yeah.
So we'd add a second, we'd add a condition in there that says that he needs to provide a plan that shows the 25 structures that are being installed right after he finishes foundation work or right after he finishes blasting?
Foundation work.
Okay. Okay, and then-
So stormwater management, you know, we'll do a blasting and so we'll do a stormwater management.
With reference to that section, is there a definition of significant rainfall that the block will use? Because the phrase is there, and I don't know what it means.
I think it's a term of art. No, I mean, really, the engineers, I'm sure there's an engineering standard for what a significant rainfall is. None of us are civil engineers, which is why we got our consultant who isn't here tonight to answer that question, but I'm sure he can, he can answer it quickly.
I think I remember you saying two inches.
That sounds, that sounds-
Two inches in the area.
I don't want to do it, but I think that's what we're calling.
Two inches in an hour?
Yeah, something like that.
But that's a- He's the person that asked that question, we can't ask him tonight.
Can I call him?
Yeah. Okay, so that takes care of-
You know, and I can email him tomorrow and just say what it is and then I'll probably do it.
It's fine. Yeah. And we're going to, it should be the same email that we, that you send them relative to this identifying star tree. Then the last item was the hours of work.
Yeah, that's the one of the bone of contention. Our understanding coming away from me last time is, as I remember the discussion, somebody said, what do the bylaws say on it anyways? You know, eventually somebody, I think it was Mr. Chalobah, who made the wrong-
It was.
Actually found, there might be a bylaws in Redmond. When you get to the last sentence, which is the one that says, there will be no work on Saturdays except between 8:30 and 8:00. I thought somebody said at that point, yeah, well, we just strike that last sentence, we'll be okay, and it went on from there. That's not what came back in the draft. What came back is no blasting excavation, et cetera. We would prefer the no work on Saturday because the exterior-
I think it was no outside work.
Outside work, outside, yeah. Well, we'd like, no, but got shut down last time on the-
Right, it did.
Yeah. Would like no outside because, you know, that was a lot of hammering, a lot of nail guns, a lot of-
Kind of say, that's what I remember, actually.
I know we talked, and my position is, we shouldn't be treated any better or worse than everybody else in town, and we've always worked under this bylaw. But I, but we did agree that the noisiest operation is the drilling, the blasting, and the big excavators and all that. And if we don't, if we don't work on Saturdays, there's X number of framing days, for example, hammers and hammers.
I don't want to be adversarial, but it's not quite like everybody else in town, because you were, for one thing, you're now looking for a special permit from the zoning board of fields, which puts you in a little bit different category from a guy that just wants to build a house on an ordinary performing lot. And so there's, there's room for negotiation there. Understanding that your call is to, is to build as rapidly as possible, which means you're going to want a crew out there whenever you can get one out there. On the other hand, what we talked about in the last meeting, and this is, people correct me if my, their reason, not the same as yours, but I thought we had said, firstly, I thought we'd said, working outside work on Saturdays, no inside work on Saturdays, okay. That's what I thought, that's where I thought we'd wound up.
I review the tape just to make sure I agree with you. That was the intent.
I, well, was there mention on the table drilling, the blasting, and the excavation? You know, in relation to those hours specifically about work on Saturdays, outside work on Saturdays? It seems very burdensome to me, you know, these guys, you know, I brought up that argument before, maybe it doesn't matter, but, you know, the framers, they're there for three months, they're bringing their trailer of tools, you know, these guys work for a living, these are working class guys, and, you know, I mean, tell them they can't go work on Saturday, but if they were, they have to bring all their tools back, you know, it's, I don't know that it's fair to me, and I don't know that it's fair to everybody
Can I make a suggestion? I think that the concern was between April and October.
I mean, if he wants to deal with the cold weather and we're not outdoors anyways, that's fine, by the way.
It's hard to know when.
Well, I know, sorry. We're offering-
I remember this part of the conversation too, frankly. We discussed that too, that when could you hear outside work, cold weather, you can't hear it. I mean, it's, this is a little like deja vu all over again, because we did go through this issue at the last session. Well, I mean-
But your document does not say that.
I know, well, that's what we're talking about.
Exactly.
At least two of us, I don't know about you guys, but two of us heard the same thing, but I agree.
Here.
Yeah, I think you weren't here, so.
On the other hand, I'm currently having the benefit of having a large addition being put on a house considerable distance from me, actually, not just right in my backyard. And we've had some nice weather, and the doors have been open, and that constant bam, bam, bam of the guns is, over a course of hours and hours, is really annoying. And this is a relatively small addition as opposed to a great big house, which is how many feet from you guys?
Three hundred.
Yeah. Mine's around, I mean, this is around a curve and a bend, still comes over multiple houses in between. So I'm very sympathetic to you, because I, you're, you will have not just that one day a week where it might be peaceful. And that seems, since this is a special permit, this house is going to take a long time to frame.
It's probably three months to frame.
Yeah, three months, that, six days a week, bam, 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 those guns.
CBA can always overrule us.
When do you think the framing would take place?
It's hard to know when we're going to start. I mean, ideally, we would start construction, you know, in April or May, which means framing would start August or something, July.
Wow.
Yeah, you think the hammering's going to be bad, wait until you get the blasting.
Or drilling.
But that's, we'll get to the blasting in a minute here. I don't know, I-
I can see the way the board is going with it.
The way we're leaning?
It's not, it's not a deal breaker for me, it's trying just to be treated fairly, but, you know, I'm not going to-
Yeah, but again, it's, this is a negotiating process, you know what I'm saying? It's not, it's not as though you can build this by absolute right, you need to get a special permit in order to do it.
If the board is, it sounds like you may be supportive of this project to the CBA, and, you know, having your support would be great, and if I can't work Saturdays, in order to get your full support, that would be great.
That's, I think that's work coming down, we're just- Obviously, I know John has one, but-
Well, once, you know, by the time November 1st comes along, you're still going to be framing then, too. That, at that point, I mean, once the, it really is not that great, but it shouldn't, it's just having your windows open and having it constant.
Well, when, look at the bigger picture, you know, support with the ZBA from the board and the Saunders would certainly be great, so we just can get through it. That's the base, Miss Thomas Saunders. We negotiated through this.
Well, as you, as you have reminded me several times, my first choice is that you just go away.
Becoming personal.
Becoming personal from there. You know, it's all sort of, it's downhill from there, the question of just how far downhill we go.
But as long as we're talking about noise, I think the one thing we should note in here, and I don't know if we should, I think we should probably make this part of the boilerplate, that, that people should be advised that the planning board standards are more stringent for notification, number of sensors, those sorts of issues than the state standards. And we will, you know, when, when the issue of the blasting plan comes up, we will be applying the same kinds of standards that we did for, say, 253 Meadowbrook, where, you know, the number of people notified may stand beyond the state limit, the state radius. The number of sensors required in the buildings may, may be greater than what's required in the state standards, those sorts of things. The notification requirements may be more stringent, you know, just to be, just because it's such, it's such a contentious issue in Weston, it just keeps coming up over and over and over again. So I think we ought to have that language in that condition. On page, it's page, it's B2 or page 11. It's not just notification, it's, we're going to have, we're going to have the considerably more stringent requirements than the state would stipulate with respect to the number and type of sensors, the distance of the radius, notification radius, the types of notifications required, those sorts of things.
The strength of blast, of course.
Yes. And also the limit on the, on the time limit, so you don't wind up with a Sunset Road nightmare where they had three and a half solid months dawn to dusk hammering on the ledge.
Wait, Sunset or Aberdeen?
Everdeen, Everdeen Road. I mean, that, that, you think hammering was bad, the neighbors on Everdeen Road were just beside themselves because it went on and on and on.
So this will get talked out when he comes in for blasting?
Yes, but, but people should be given a heads up on this. This is not a minor issue in Weston at all.
So going back to construction, are we saying no outside construction activities shall take place on Saturdays period, or are we allowing it in the winter?
I was talking about outside activity.
Right, no outside construction activities shall take place on Saturdays period, or or between?
In warm weather months.
We have to define that.
In months, April 15th to October 31st.
April 4th, day of Halloween.
Well, April 15th to 31st is even better, because who wants that going on while you're trying to do taxes?
Okay, except between the hours of 8:00 AM and 3:00 PM from April 15th, did you say?
Yeah.
To?
October 21st.
How much longer does that make the process take when you have, when you have the time to shorten like that? Does it extend at like a month?
Two or three months.
I can't imagine, that one six-hour day would spend something two or three months.
Depends on the time of year.
It's really the framing, that's the big thing.
Right, so it's another type of frame.
Yeah, so, I mean, you have to, as a battery, I don't know.
Well, my argument is-
15 pres--
Adding to the duration.
It's about 8,000 square meters. Frame one up in three and a half days.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
They had a rooting interest in getting the frame of it in a hurry.
Wow.
Al just related in this story, but it's in the interest of the time, that Steve has an appointment at 7:00 AM tomorrow. And he's our editor.
Anything else, or what, how did we come out on this?
In the, we're not, there'll be no exterior construction between, what, you said, what's the start date?
April 15th to October 31st.
On?
Saturday.
Saturday, correct, and we're going to let you, you know, we're going to let you work Monday, Friday, okay? I just thought, throw that in.
April 1st is okay.
Thank you, that's very-
April 1st is okay.
April the 1st, okay.
She wants peace and quiet, I don't know if she's going to attend.
Saturday, April 1st is okay.
So April the 1st to October 31st?
Between the hours of AM and 3:00 PM like it says, right?
There's no work on Saturdays.
Oh, wait, wait, yeah.
Yeah.
When there is work, it's between AM and 3:00.
Right. So they can't paint?
That interior is okay.
Interior's fine, yes.
You're not starting until August anyway.
It's really hard to know, you know, again, I'm trying to find-
So it just affects you a couple of months.
If he's painting outside on Saturdays, I don't think they'll do it.
Yeah, well, just leave it.
Maybe nothing higher than 40 dB at the property line.
It's too late for making jokes, man.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
So?
Now, what about other changes?
I'm just going to give mine to Betsy, I don't give you that.
So, kind of like typos and that sort of thing?
Well, more or less.
Betsy, was there anything that you had? I mean, there's so much narrative sort of in, like, because we had so many meetings, it kind of goes on for pages and pages.
Yeah, I have it in my-
Yeah.
It was like reading more than a piece, but five times more boring.
No. I think it's great, seriously.
I don't know if it makes any difference, but in the narrative, it says, I noted the conflict between the neighbors on the location of the house. Actually, what I did is said that we joined the neighbors in preferring Plan A.
Okay, where was that?
Yeah.
Well, it's-
Somewhere.
I mean, I'm not sure that's standard, it's just-
But, you know, at the risk of being really boring, the nomenclature standard again, so that we're not, it's not always J. Glastine and S. Oppenheimer and Z.
I was just wondering, the impression that there was a different protocol.
Or AAA dot, dot, dot.
Yeah, some kind of a Microsoft word problem there.
Sometimes J. Glastine, because that was Y. Glastine.
Yeah, there was a Y. Glastine in there. Probably a N. Glastine.
Maybe, hold on a minute. Oh, yeah, there was another one in there, that notation of, you know, findings that Glen Road has moderate traffic.
I know, we got such a joke out of that.
And rush hour is more than-
It's not, I know, it's a very-
I know, it's a very heavily trafficked.
Boy, do they move.
Yeah, it's generally moderate traffic during rush hour.
Yep. Right, Glen Road is now a residential road through, has a moderate volume, no.
Now he's gonna come down in a cold, it's gonna be our fault, we kept him out, right? You all right?
Yeah.
Here, here's the whole discussion on, on the outside work.
Right.
Right here, page seven to sixteen.
Which page?
Right, seven sixteen.
Yeah. Where it was noted that Anne Catherine said that he could shave two, three months off of it. Didn't you say of a two-year, but off of the two-year project to work on Saturdays? Anne said that he would honor an agreement of no noise on Saturdays, so I guess this was what, last time you all met?
Yeah. Blasting standards, we did talk about that. What if I conquered? Those standards, I, I think we could use the language in What If I Conquer Road? Or the blasting requirement in this one.
Did we talk about changing the hours on weekdays from seven thirty to six instead of seven to six thirty? Because that's what you quoted me as saying, I don't remember.
So, so what hours are we talking about? Seven thirty to six?
I'm just asking if we talked about changing the hours during the week, if the standard laws are seven AM to six thirty PM.
I don't think so.
I'm just crossing out that section.
With a language.
Yeah.
So it's seven AM to six thirty PM, Monday through Friday.
Yeah. It's just town standard.
It's just Thursday.
Okay, any other comments from anybody? Looks like it's, there's a lot of boilerplate in here.
Yeah, towards the back.
The only thing that seems weird to me, completely out of place, is on the last page on fifteen, it says, be the generator shown to the plant in a lot of scene before you just close the property line. And it shall be dismodelled or similar product, which just seems like that was tacked on in an odd place. But I suppose it really doesn't matter.
Where else do you want it?
I was gonna say, where else would it go? I don't know. Sort of maybe in the regular conditions, but it doesn't matter at this stage, you know, the conditions to be satisfied prior to COA, COO. Yeah, but the other.
It has to be tested soon, so.
But it's a, yeah, I mean, it is within the conditions prior to.
Right, they've gotta test it once everything gets.
Okay, so these are just others, okay.
Okay. Now, are you voting Sue? Because you missed one of the meetings, or did you, you listened in on the telephone?
No.
No, so it's just the three of us?
I guess so.
Okay.
Why can't I vote?
Well, you missed a meeting, didn't you?
Yeah, but I was in on, they had enough meetings. I was here for most of them, so.
Did you miss a meeting and still vote?
And it's not important to me, frankly, I'm not too offended.
Technically, she was supposed to review the tapes.
I think you can review the tapes once, but you still, you have to review the tapes to be able to vote. Sorry, Sue.
Okay.
I'm shocked you didn't review the tape.
No.
She's too busy digging around, catch pieces.
Prove catch pieces to make sure they're pumped.
What is the sequence now? This, this takes us back, redrafts, and then what happens?
Goes to the zoning board of appeals.
Does, does the redraft, does everybody get a look at the redraft, or is?
I'm gonna get a look at the redraft. And we can, we'll send a copy of the redraft to Jonathan, to Mark, and we can send one to you too.
And the planning board then also writes a letter to the ZBA?
I think in this case, they probably just.
There was some mention of it earlier, that's why.
Probably ought to send a letter, because nobody's gonna read this fifteen-page document, cover to cover. What?
If they have to rule on this and they think it's complicated, they read it, they do.
You think they're gonna read it?
Yes.
I usually send, if it involves a case that the planning board has deliberated on, I usually send a decision.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, isn't our approval enough?
Their challenge is unless they review all the plans, the decision doesn't, doesn't paint the whole picture by any of the planting plan.
Yeah.
So what's your preference?
They generally read the decision, I can tell you probably four out of five read the decision. I won't tell you what, uh, if the one that doesn't doesn't read, you know, goes in cold. So don't take it personal.
All right, we'll send them the decision, and they can read it or not. So, how are we doing? Has, has everybody made all the comments you want to make?
Yeah.
In that case.
Then I move that we accept the significant actions, like plan approved for four forty-one Glen Road, as amended.
Second.
Hold favor.
Aye.
Are there still business, Betsy?
No.
Nope? Think we can get out of here? It's only eleven twenty-five.
Early, we can stay and range of waiting until now.
Thank you for your sharp eyes on looking at everything.
You guys can adjourn.
Oh, hey, Chairman. The videographers are wondering if we can adjourn.
Somebody made a motion to adjourn.
I so moved.
Second, hold a favor.